Oh, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, discussion of cell towers. Chris Corey, you want to lead this off?
Yeah, I do. I'm liaison with the Technology Advisory Committee. The Technology Advisory Committee has been working on this particular issue for many, many years. At least as far as I can tell, it's been eight years. It may have been longer. During that eight-year period of time, along, a lot of changes have occurred with respect to cell service and what people are doing with telephone and internet connections. What we have in Benita Springs are a lot of areas that are where there is poor cell service and other areas where there is cell service but because of the proliferation of cellphone devices. The capacity of the cell towers don't meet the demand that's being placed on them. I note in the green sheet that there are less than 430,000 residential landlines left in Florida, while in 2019, there are 22.3 million cell phones, and that's data is now four years old. So I would think that that number of cellphone wireless subscribers has increased along with the population of Florida. As a result, almost all 911 calls are attempted by cell phones, but as Ben Hirschen noted, you know, if you have poor cellphone service, you can actually get routed, your call can actually get routed to Collier County, and that delays the response rate or the response time it takes to get to emergencies. So if you're, if you've got a spouse or a loved one that's in cardiac arrest, or if you yourself are laying in the bathroom floor and can't get outside to make a cellphone connection, minutes matter, and it's a life safety issue. So the Technology Advisory Committee, working on behalf of the board, or this council, I mean, has concluded that what's needed is to raise the height of cell towers in our land development code to a minimum of 125 feet, which would expand the coverage by cell tower, cellphone providers such as Verizon, AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, so forth, MetroPCS, and improve not only cellphone connectivity but also internet connectivity when people are away from home and away from, from fiber. So what the request is by the Technology Advisory Board is to, first of all, consider raising the height limitation up to at least 125 feet within the land development code and to take a look at the current ordinance that governs cellphone permitting and simplify it. Now, unfortunately, the draft ordinance that the committee worked up somehow didn't make it to the green sheet. I'll take responsibility for that because it is my green sheet. I should have noticed that that draft was not there, but it's a fairly simple draft that we'll provide to staff, but it simply works off the current FCC recommendations or regulations which all cellphone ordinances has to comply with, but it, more importantly, I think it makes our permitting requirements a lot simpler, a lot, lot less hassle.
I'd like to make a motion that we study this and bring it back with an ordinance next meeting.
Well, I-
Increase the towers or whatever we need to do. We need to investigate it and bring it back. I think we, things have changed an awful lot in the last few years, and I think we need the added coverage. Can you make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, could we do discussion before we get into motions?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. I just wanted to thank the IT Committee for this one because this has been an issue that has been, you know, on the radar of the Benita citizens for quite some time, you know. We have really bad cell service, and we have the ability to fix it, and that, one of the, I, I just thank the gentleman in the crowd who came up from the committee and he gave, you know, we've talked about this about eight months ago before the new folks got here. Didn't really catch much steam, but I felt like the summary he just gave, very succinct, to the point. At the end of the day, we have to get, the towers, they have to be higher. You know, it's a simple fix, and we know what we have to do. So I, I, I think to push it back might be a mistake. I think it's pretty clear in the green sheet that we have the option to make a motion here to move forward, and I think that that would be the most expeditious way to, to address this issue that really the city's had for, for far too long. And I think this is a good overdue step, and I think it would be good for us to move on this today if possible. Thank you.
I tried to make a motion. Does a motion go through?
Well, I thought we were having discussion. You said we would have, Jesse had discussion. I'd like to just add, or do you want-
Well, I just need a second.
We do, Mr. Mayor, we do have a second.
I got a second? Okay. Now we have-
Now, can I have, make a point?
You want to go again?
Yeah. I am supportive of this, but let me tell you a true story. I had a resident that no longer lives in Benita National that was very vocal, as vocal as Chris has been, and the head of the Technology Committee, and the other person from the Technology Committee, that we need to do this. We need the height, we need more cell towers, and then about three or four months, maybe six months after that meeting, I had him call me up and he says, "You know what my developer's doing? Benita Bay," I mean, not Benita Bay, in Benita National. I said, "What?" "Well, there's a conservation area, and they're going to put a cell tower there, and it's only going to be about 200, 300 feet or so from a house. I don't want it." Now, we got some big HOAs here. Are they willing to agree to let a cell tower go into their HLA? I hope they will because my vote's contingent on everybody being willing to let a unit go into their place if the cell company wants to come.
Well, I remember bringing this article, this issue up, and it was way out on the boon docks, right? It was near a church, and it was plenty of land, because one of the issues of a tower is that it has to be able to fall the same, so it's 125 feet, it has to be able to fall north, south, east, west, 125 feet. And that's hard to find, and that's why people are turning to their own communities, and then the communities are saying, "No, no, no, not in my backyard." But wasn't there also another issue? We did pass it, and they did 125 feet, and then their tower, you know, the lots that different services get, and different services have worked differently during hurricanes here. Like, we had, the city phones worked during one but not during the other hurricane, and vice versa in terms of, and then the last one, T-Mobile supposedly, was the most consistent to get a line out and dial 911. But wasn't there something about everything's going underground and, John, maybe you remember this? Because you were like, "Why are you doing this, Laura?"
Wait, 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 wait. The gentleman is the president of the Technical Advisor Board. We spoke. Could he have, could he explain about the 13-foot towers that you're going to put out far west? He said something that you don't need the tall towers out there for-
Blanketing our city with good internet, high speed, almost fiber-based speeds, takes a combination of higher elevations, which they call macro sites, but it also takes advantage of lower elevations. For example, I was at a meeting four years ago at Benita National. You were there. Verizon offered to completely blanket Benita National with 5G with three 13-foot pedestals. That's an example of when you get to a certain point, you want to fill in the, the areas that aren't being filled in, but you need a, a macro, macro sites as an umbrella for some of the smaller sites. The smaller sites will fill in nicely, give extremely high-speed broadband that, that doesn't require anything but a pedestal 13, 14 foot. That's why you see them on light poles very often in other cities. But we do need more macro sites, too. It's a, it's a system of macro sites, which are high towers and a whole bunch of lower towers. I don't know if that answers the question.
I have made a motion to study this and bring it back.
Well, we've studied this before. If recall, you, you turfed this before.
For staff to come back with a, with an ordinance.
Staff did come back about, you know, six months ago, eight months ago?
I'm saying two weeks from now, or months from now.
All right. So for example, if you-
I want to move forward on this.
Well, and I would like Mr. John Domer to speak, whom I asked to come up.
Hello.
Hi.
I am not an expert in this field, so I will simply speak from memory in discussions I've had with those that are. There is a general path where there's fiber in the ground that supports towers. The 5G tends to be the shorter towers that are line-of-sight type towers. There is, that's a true statement, that those smaller towers for better coverage and based upon volumes of data and calls generally like to have the taller towers as backup, I'll call it, to do that. Right now, our current ordinance allows for residential areas 35 feet by right. We also break it down by type of, of land use as to the maximum height that's allowed by right and what you can ask for by special exception. That's entirely within your realm as a policy call. If you all decide you want to allow 125-foot towers by right, we can make that change very quickly. I think that Councilmember Forbes has outlined something that should at least give you a little bit of pause to look for that balance and find that balance amongst yourselves in terms of what's allowed by right and what's allowed by special exception. As passionately as, as you hear people speaking for cell towers, there is an equal amount of passion for those that don't want it right beside them. We still need service. I agree with the level of service in the city is lacking. How do we provide that? How do we move forward? You know, at this point in time, I've been told that our ordinance is not out of line with where they are building towers. That being said, if this council wants to make a focus on, on allowing certain things or incentivizing this type of infrastructure, we're happy to do it. We're happy to make the change. I just need to know if, what you're looking for and how you're wanting to accomplish it, and we're willing to put the ordinance together.
Chris?
Well, to John's point, I think, and to Jesse's point, and your point, Mayor, is that cell service in Benita Springs is not as good as it should be. It's not as good as the residents in this city deserve. What we're doing now and what we have been doing in terms of this ordinance for a number of years doesn't seem to be working. And so I would suggest that we change the way we go about this, that we adopt a minimum of, of macro cell tower heights of at least 125 feet, and we adopt an ordinance that's simpler and more attractive to cell tower operators or builders to come into Benita Springs. And so I would hope that we could get a report back from staff by May 1st or the May 1 council meeting. Give them some time. There's a lot on their plate right now, but give them 45 days to basically come back and say, you know, "Here's our thoughts, here's our concerns, here's our recommendations, and we act on it at that time, but we pledge ourselves that we, we will act on this with due haste af, as, after that meeting or during that meeting, the first meeting in May."
Chris, a quick question. How many macro towers do we have now, and what are we looking to increase it to? Approximately?
John, I don't really know the number.
We don't know that. That's unknown. That's why I'm trying to find out.
I want to say it's in the neighborhood of four, but-
Four?
Do we have now?
That we have now, but don't hold me to that number because I'm going off memory and-
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we got-
I think also, Mayor and Council, it might be helpful in the interim is, and I'll, we can work with John if we have those connections or the Technology Board, but it would be nice if we had some feedback, just as we did our sign ordinance in the past, from the actual permitting folks in these industries who go through the process and understand what their questions or concerns are, too, so we're making sure we're addressing all at the same time, too. The actual ATs, if we can have a contact with them, too.
Mr. Mayor, it would be also, make it much better, instead of just giving everybody this right of this 125-foot tower, that we, the Technology Committee should be part of this. We come up with zone areas of land that would fit, because I'm telling you, people don't want 125-foot where they look at it out of their backyard.
Some people. Some people.
Some people, but I gave you an example of a guy that was campaigning for-
Yeah, I know. One, one person raised the hell of a-
Mr. Mayor, did you see Naples put one in last week? There are aesthetically, more aesthetically pleasing versions of it. Sometimes they make it into a tree, sometimes they make it a whatever, but Naples literally just did one the other day, and if you can get it done in Naples, I think we can probably figure it out here. Just saying.
Okay. Motion is second to move forward with this?
Move forward by May 1st.
What, Ms. Mayor, what was your motion?
I made the motion that we move forward and have staff come back with an ordinance.
Okay.
At first reading is what I understood, which then you'd be, it would be a working draft that we can-
Right.
Very good. Any more comments? Small call, please. The vote?
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilmember Corey?
Aye.
Councilmember Folic?
Aye.
Councilmember Forbes?
Aye.
Councilmember Bogas?
Aye.
Councilmember Purdon?
Aye.
Okay, we're making progress today. Okay, here we are now.
EAR.
Public hearing?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. At this time, you have a public hearing to conduct the second public hearing for the city's draft evaluation and appraisal report, EAR, as required by Florida Statute 163.3191.
And of course, this is, this does provide for public comment on this item prior to the vote.
Prior to the vote, yes, sir.
And, and Ms. Mayor, this is not Dr. Banyan's first time performing an EAR for the city. I believe this is her third, so she has a, a lot of experience in terms of what needs to be in here and what does not need to be in this. She will be responding to any questions that you all have. This is not going to be a, a formal walkthrough presentation, point by point, but what we're looking at doing at this point is making the required changes that we, we have to according to, to statute. So, Dr. Banyan?
Okay. Motion to approve?
Second.
Well, public comment, please. Public comment.
May you vote?
Does Dr. Banyan want to say anything?
I do have, I do have a presentation, if you would like to- I would suggest so that we're in compliance with Florida statute, that we walk through the presentation-
Yes.
And allow public comment, and then offer the vote. This, this is in compliance, this is a requirement of the state.
Okay.
So I want to thank everyone here, members of the public, council, community development, as well as my fine graduate student, Erica Macagie, who's been working very hard on this as well. So this presentation is really just a highlight of some of the information that's in the report. It's certainly not all of the information in the report, if anyone had a chance to look at it. It's roughly 140 pages, so these are just kind of the highlights, and I will try to sort of go through it quickly because I know you, you have a good handle on this information. But really, the outcome of today's meeting is to, for you to send a recommendation that the staff send the ear determination letter to the state of Florida, and I'll talk a little bit about that, and then to review the data and analysis, which is your report that, that was prepared. So I know this is small. This is a summary of what the evaluation and appraisal review does. It's a required, state-required process every seven years. And with that, there's certain goals that the state outlines for the ear. One is to look at any changes in state law that may necessitate changes in the city's comprehensive plan. So that's one of the major things that the ear does. The second thing that the state encourages is that the city look at any changing conditions and implications for what would change in the comp plan. So those could be a variety of things. It does not, so I just want to emphasize, the ear, this process does not amend the comprehensive plan. It's a review, and so that review, this review, will go to the Department of Economic Opportunity by April 1, and as you know, this is the last meeting before April 1. So there's kind of three big components of the ear. The first is the changes in state legislation. So in the report that you have, that's what's known as Appendix A, where all of the legislative changes have been laid out and implications for the comp plan. The second portion is current conditions, and that's roughly the first 40 pages of your report, which looks at the current conditions in the city. And then the last component is the plan review, and that's what we call Appendix B. And Appendix B is every policy that's in your comp plan. We've gone through it to determine whether there might be a need to change that policy by state law, or any optional amendment, or no comment. So optional amendments are really at your discretion. They're not state-required, so you'll see a check, checkbox for those. Major participants in this process have been members of the public, city council. You've had this presentation before. The local planning agency, as well as other city and, city of Benita Springs staff and related agencies. They are, they were a good source of information for some of the changing conditions. So the process timeline, you've seen this before. We started this roughly in May, April, May of last year, where we did some preliminary research, developed an interim project report that was just kind of the preliminary data that we were seeing at the time, and then the final ear report, which is what you have in your hands now, after this meeting, will amend the, the last few sections of that final report to just summarize what you did today, as well as some of the input that we had from members of the public the last couple days, and then the letter to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity. So that's the last step in this process. Throughout this, we've had ongoing public outreach and engagement. You'll remember, we talked last meeting, a couple weeks ago, where I was on the screen, about the survey that, that we provided. So the changing conditions, some of the, the information here, I'll try to be expedient, but, but it's interesting and kind of does form some of the highlights. So one of the big components of the ear is really to look at population and population changes. So the, this is based on the Bureau of Economic and Business Research. They provide population projections. So this permanent population currently is a little 55,00502. Projected in 2035, around 68,000, and then by 2050, about 77,000. We also looked at the seasonal population with this process, and as you know, we engaged the Regional and Economic Research Institute at Florida Gulf Coast University to look at that seasonal, and they developed a, a, a pretty sophisticated methodology for, for looking at seasonal, which I think is, is on very solid territory. And as we've talked, seasonal population is very hard to estimate, so they used a couple different processes to do that. And what they developed was a seasonal, what they call a seasonal multiplier, and estimated that, that seasonal population could grow to around 30,000, a little less than 30,000 by 2050. And I'll just note that that seasonal population is at any one time. So at any one time during season, not during the whole year, but during season at any one time, about 21,000 now, it could grow to about a little under 30. So that gives us the total population estimated growth. Industry, I won't go over this in great detail, but we always look at what are the top three industries. One of the things I'll note here is that this is statistics from 2017, and so an important component to looking at the current conditions is what data you have available. So the, the data in the ear is a snapshot of the data that we have now. So when you're looking at, at anything here in this report, and any members of the public note that this is what is available now, the US sent, the US business census does their business census every five years. So the 2022 data is not yet available. So we just take what we can and what's the most current. So you'll see that your, your top industry is accommodation and food service in the city, and retail trade is the second. So that's probably not a big surprise to members of council. I won't go over this in great detail, but what I will note is by many indicators, the city of Benita Springs has a higher median household income and a higher mean household income than the state. In addition, there's less people in the labor force than in the state. So that does indicate, again, not a great surprise to anyone, is that there more than likely are more retirees here in the city in the permanent population. All of those statistics kind of point to that, that same thing, when you compare it to this, other people in the state of Florida. One thing we'll note about housing is that we've had a lot of conversation about housing during the ear process from members of the public, as well as members of council and staff agencies, is that the housing and cost burden has, has gone up in the city, and it's gone up everywhere. And so we provide some statistics about single fam, family median sales. That's higher than it was seven years ago when we did this process. Condo median sales is higher than seven years ago. The median gross rent is now 1432. Seven years ago, it was a little over 1,000. What's significant is the last, the last number, which is 90, 90.5% of renters paid more than $1,000 in rent, and that jumped when we looked from year to year. That jumped about 10%. So you can see things that are changing very quickly in the city with housing. And then the housing stock, you've got a little less single family, a little more multifamily, and your mobile homes have reduced. Again, this is a snapshot, and it's the data we have available, so we don't know what impact the hurricane had on, on these numbers. What we have recommended that I think is important is when the amendments occur next year, that the population be looked at, the housing be looked at, because you'll have more current data, and, and some of that may accommodate for the impact of the hurricane. The vacant land and unit potential is another important component of the ear. Roughly, you have now around 23,011 vacant acres. The state requires us to look at, or the city to accommodate population, for the population projections for a 10-year planning period. So they, they ask the city to look at, do you have the development, do you have the, the unit potential to accommodate the population in the next 10 years? That doesn't mean housing on the ground now, just unit potential. From our analysis, it appears that you do. By 2035, you'll roughly have, roughly around 6,000 and change remaining units as a potential development. Most of that is in the downtown district and general commercial. Most of that is in the downtown district and general commercial. So when we look at sort of some of those charts, you can see that's where most of the remaining unit potential is. Redevelopment is going to likely increase that. So your downtown plans will likely increase some remaining unit potential. But what we looked at, again, is snapshot, what's been approved. And so as things come online, you'll see some of that, those numbers change. Again, permanent population, no, we don't estimate any new capacity needed. Same thing with seasonal. We don't estimate there's any new capacity needed for the season, to accommodate seasonal population. So state consistency review. We looked at, this is just a high-level summary of what's changed at the state. There's a number of definitions that always change. Those are related to solar, solar facilities, floating solar facilities. Statutory references have changed, references to agencies have changed. And the the two things about solar is that solar facilities need to be sort of considered in agricultural zoning districts and agricultural areas. And floating solar facilities have to be allowed in appropriate future land use categories. And then the public school facilities needs to be looked at for its proportionate fair share contributions. So there's, again, more more things that need to be considered during the amendment phase in terms of what is an appropriate land use category defining for certain, kind of what are the agricultural land categories where solar has to be. So there's a good amount of work to do in the in the next amendment phase. Just a note about public participation in the process. We had two public workshop, two public workshops and two drop-in sessions. So the public workshops were June and January. We had planned to do a public workshop the day the hurricane hit, and that was delayed. So probably for good reason. And then we, so we also added two drop-in sessions for members of the public to just come and ask questions on a more one-on-one to increase understanding of some of the, some of the year. We also did that online survey. Quite a few responses, six hundred and sixty-seven, which was about double that you got from last, the the last year survey. Strong interest in quality of life, strong interest in walkability, environmental protection. Again, probably things that you've heard already, but the survey really did confirm some of that. So moving on to just conducting the review. Again, we looked at state-required amendments and optional amendments. Those optional were based on any changing conditions of kind of integrating and making the plan more consistent. We looked at timeframes. There's a number of policies that refer to something the city may needed to have done in twenty-ten or previous years, two thousand and four. So we we made kind of a general comment that those should be updated based on policy and practice because if something will still be on the radar screen for the city, we want to be able to communicate that through the comprehensive plan. And then the last thing just I'll note about that review is that the recommendations are kind of a guidepost for the amendments next year. So you don't see a lot of specificity in the recommendations because they're really things that need to be worked out and discussed. And there could be a number of tools that are that are considered. So the plan element review, I I will try to, I'll try to kind of go through this relatively quickly. There's, always the future land use element has a number of things to look at. And that's just because there's, there's many things that do end up changing at the state level. So state-required amendments are going to be around the solar and what's what's required by by the state for those floating solar facilities. And then there's a host of optional amendments that you can look at accessory dwelling units for housing, how you might look at the mix of residential and commercial in your, in certain land use categories. Again, as I noted, the downtown district and general commercial have the most housing. Do we need to look at that appropriate mix there? And then there's a number of updates. And so I'm, I'm not going to repeat this on every element I go through, but I'll just note, there's, on every element, there's updates that are needed. In this element, it's the maps need to be updated. And then there's policies that have been completed that should be amended. There's density calculation tables that could be updated where appropriate. And then there's general terminology and typographical errors that could be addressed. So I won't repeat those, those three key things for every element, but almost every element needs those kind of typos, update for current references, and update amend for for completed policies. Transportation element, you don't really have any state-required amendments in that element. But you still continue to work on your level of service requirements and whether certain streets should be considered constrained. And again, you update for maps, typos, consistency, completed policies. Your housing element has one required state change, and that's a statutory reference. And then, again, in the housing element, that that's where you can look to update some policies to reflect current policy and practice. Housing trust fund, and there's other kind of locational housing policies that you may consider, as well as other affordable housing policies that would really need to be worked out. Inclusionary zoning, there's a lot of tools out there that can be applied, but but those need to be carefully considered. And again, all the host of updates should be done. In the infrastructure element, you just have a reference that you need to, you need to amend by state-required. And in that infrastructure element, there's some inconsistency between the future land use element and the infrastructure element that really should be updated. It's not state-required, but it's kind of an inconsistency in your plan that could cause confusion. And then there's some goals, objectives, and policies that that discourage sprawl that you could also work on. And then, again, updating for typos, outdated policies, that sort of thing. Conservation and coastal management element, there's an updated reference that state-required change. And then there's a number of other areas in that element that could be something that the city looks at. One is defining what the coastal area is. That's not defined in the comp plan. That's different from the coastal management area and different from your coastal high-hazard zone. So that definition should be addressed. Where is it? And then there's some policies that you can look at for protection and conservation. You can look at some of your natural disaster risk and mitigation policies for coordination. And then what we've said is that the policy, or the the element as a whole, it has a lot of duplication, there's a lot of out-of-date policies. And if the council wanted to entertain a rewrite, it might make that a little, be able to clean up all of those things at the same time. So, and then there, again, there's kind of outdated, outdated policies, typos, et cetera. Recreation and open space, you don't have any required state amendments, but you could do some optional, optional changes. There's some inconsistency between the comp plan and the parks master plan in terms of level of service that that should be addressed. And then revisions to the element really could support sort of other initiatives, kind of economic development, those sorts of things that you may consider. And then typos, et cetera. In our government, in our governmental element, there's no required state changes. But again, sort of the three things that that you may consider, updating for language, outdated policies, typos, et cetera. Capital improvements, same thing, no required updates. But in capital improvements element, again, there's the level of service that conflicts with the future land use element. A future land use is the most concurrent language, so that should be made consistent. And then there's things that you could consider in terms of environmental conservation, efficiency and equity, those sorts of things. And again, sort of the typo, typos. I'm almost done, I have two quick more policies left to go. State and public participation monitoring, there's a very long name for that element. Monitoring, updating, evaluation procedures element, you don't have any state-required changes. And yet, there's inconsistencies that are optional. The old, the the lang- existing language refers to the old year approval process. It doesn't refer to the new process that's required by the state. It doesn't refer to just that you're going to send the year determination letter. So it's, it would be a good thing to clean that up. And it would make it more clear for the next, the next year. Public school facilities, there are, is a state-required, state-mandated amendment, and that is school concert concurrency requirements now allow for a proportionate fair share for school mitigation. And that that's new, and so the current policy does not allow for that, the current element. And so that needs to be addressed. And then there's optional amendments that you could undertake. So there's not a lot of clarity in that element about whose responsibility is for schools. We know it's the school district, but the policies don't necessarily indicate that. And then there's some terminology that that needs to be cleaned up, some new references that need to be provided. And then the last thing is the definitions. It's not technically an element, but it's an important part of your comp plan. There's a number of things that you could optionally clean up to make your comp plan more clear, but there is some state-mandated amendments. So when you go to to decide where your appropriate land use categories are for solar, that those definitions need to, need to be added to that. So that's our review. So what we're asking is two things. If you have any feedback or questions on the ear report. And then the second thing is to recommend that staff send the letter to the, to the State Department of Economic Opportunity indicating that changes do need to be made to your comp plan based on changes in state law. So, thank you.
I make a motion that we send the determining letter to the state, that we update, clean up everything, inconsistencies, typos. I won't go over the whole list, but that we send a letter to update our policy and our practices according to state law.
I would just real quick with that, just if, for those of y'all who didn't catch it in there with the solar component, this was something that was added in during COVID. So this is a state mandated activity, so this isn't something we can circumvent. But I express my issues with solar, like, I I, just like our water issues, I feel like solar is one piece. But at the end of the day, I mean, like, it's solar, every two years, the technology has changed so such that it's almost irrelevant. And a large, and then on top of that, when they lose service and and their life of service, they're bleaching harmful chemicals into the ground. And additionally, the components that make up solar are are done by the Chinese, by slave labor in Africa. So I mean, there's a number of issues with solar. So the idea that these things should be mandated on a large scale, until there's some work done in that area, you know, I don't necessarily agree that that's, you know, the number one priority that we should have here. But I I don't think the state's really left us an option. But this is something that is new, so if this, if you guys kind of, your ears went up a little bit, yeah, that that was snuck in.
My understanding is that we haven't changed anything.
That's correct.
And this doesn't change anything.
And the, and the city has the opportunity to decide, again, where is appropriate, where is appropriate? And you have some ability in your comp, comp plan to kind of tailor that to the city, but.
Are you going to send this to the state, and the state's going to evaluate it and send it back to us? Is that?
The only thing, yeah, the only thing that that we will send to the state is the year determination letter that says you need to make changes to your comp plan. That's the only thing that will go to the state. The report is for you, and the report is for the whoever's making the amendments next year to use as a reference. In addition to that, when those amendments do happen, the amendments do get sent to the, to the State Department of Economic Opportunity, but that will be next year.
So we have to do something next year?
Correct, you have one year, one year to make, at a minimum, the state-mandated requirements. It would be your opportunity to look at any optional ones that make sense for the city to move forward with. All right, you you do need to have public comment before you vote this public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr.
Hello again, Joe Gallagher, one oh two ninety Indiana Street. Okay, just a very short one. The ER has noted the large number of seniors already present in the community, as well as the likelihood they'll be become larger. What's not addressed is what should be done. As I was speaking to the FGCU consultant, that her colleague, Dr. Felke, did a, did a study of the, of the seniors and the, the needs of the seniors. And I, I think that that would be an appropriate addition to the, to the report and how the, the old library is an ideal location for the senior center to help meet those needs of the seniors, the present seniors, and the seniors yet to come.
Thank you. The other comment? Yes?
Don Koncakowski, Benita Beach Association. I just have a few items on the optional amendments. One of the first ones, under future land use, it says throughout plan, allowing the local government to adopt an ordinance, allowing accessory dwelling units to be located in any area zoned for single-family residential use. And my response to that would be, although the state is allowing the city to permit accessory dwelling units, it's not required. The Conservation Coastal Management Element Policy 511 would require the barrier and coastal islands to be excluded from such a change. It is important that all elements of the comprehensive plan are consistent with each other, with the other elements of the comprehensive plans. Policy 511 states that rezoning to allow higher density shall not be permitted on barrier and coastal islands. The second one I had a concern about was, consider a rewrite of the Conservation Coastal Management Element. And my response would be no. This element is written, as written, has done an excellent job of protecting and managing the coastal high-hazard area. Two councils ago, they attempted to delete almost all of the Conservation Coastal Management Element protections. At that time, they referred to the protective elements as traps. Goals and policies that protect life and property are not traps. They are protections that cannot be easily removed as it should be. The third one was to clarify what is meant by coastal planning area. My response is the coastal resource protection is to protect the natural resources of the coastal planning area from damage caused by inappropriate development. The existing works, the city of Benita Springs is a coastal city, and the entire city is, and its resources, such as water, streams, wetlands, et cetera, all need protection and will all be developed. Therefore, the coastal planning area should include the entire city. And the last one was under the Recreation Open Space Element. And it says, consider revising to clarify city's goal. The existing policy is great. Policy 112 states that the city will encourage and cooperate with the state's master plan for the Lover's Key Carl E. Johnson State Recreation Area and make it more accessible, thereby reducing pressure to the local beach accesses and other parks. If you are going to revise it, it would benefit to add to it. Add that the city will advertise with signage and on the city website location, on city website, the location, address, and amenities available, not only at Lover's Key, but also at Lee Dog, Lee County Dog Beach on Big Hickory. Although dogs are not allowed on Benita Beach, and there is up to a five-hundred-dollar fine, they are allowed just over the bridge. In addition, just four minutes north of Little Hickory Island, at Lover's Key State Park, there is a huge sandy beach with facilities and endless parking and several amenities such as biking, boat ramp concession, hiking, picnic area, playground, restrooms, observation area, canoe ramp, just to name a few. We just need to educate the public. They would much rather drive four minutes longer straight to Lover's Key and find a parking space rather than slow down at each beach access along Benita Beach, only to find all spots taken by nine AM. Some background to give you a little perspective about the generosity of Benita and its access. Some background to give you a little perspective about the generosity of Benita and its access number. Collier County has 57 access points along 34 miles of coastline, an average of one every half mile. Lee County has 98 public accesses along 47 miles of coastline, also an average of one every half mile. Compared to Benita Beach subdivision, may, may I just finish? I'm almost done. Thank you. Compared to Benita Beach subdivision that offers 10 public accesses within two and a half miles of coastline, in addition to two large public beaches at each end of the island. This is an average of four times the average public accesses of the entire counties of Lee and Collier. Collier County has a population of seven times that of Benita, and Lee County has a population of 13 times that of Benita. Yet, Benita supplies four times more public accesses than the average throughout the two entire counties. In addition, Florida Coastal Management identified 1,692 public access points for the entire state of Florida. This corresponds to an average of one public, public access every five miles of shoreline. Benita Beach subdivision supplies 10 accesses within two and a half miles. This number of public accesses is 20 times the average public accesses for the entire state of Florida. Based on the facts, Benita Beach subdivision is pretty generous and needs some relief with some help with advertising of Dog Beach and state Lover's Key. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Doc. Anybody else that had more public comment? Okay, should I make a motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we do have a motion in a second.
Okay, any other comment about the year? Vote, please.
Mayor Steinmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Corey?
Aye.
Councilmember Folic?
Aye.
Councilmember Forbes?
Aye.
Councilmember Bogas?
Aye.
Councilmember Purdon?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Very good. Okay, city attorney's item, anything from Carly?
Not today.
San Severino, how do you pronounce your name?
San Severino.
Okay, everybody got that? All right. City attorney, uh, city manager's report?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Lisa, if you come forward, we have the presentation and review of the January financial report.
Mr. Mayor, if you wouldn't mind, before they start, I am the guest speaker, and I'm speaking on the federal response for the Hurricane Ian storm up in Fort Myers. So, unfortunately, I'm going to have to go. So, I don't want to interrupt the financial report, so I wanted to dip out before that happened.
Okay, thank you.
I wish you guys all a great day. Thank you so much.
And feel better.
Thank you.
We don't have any more votes, do we? No. Yeah, maybe. Okay, go ahead.
Good afternoon, for the record, Lisa Robertson. This is your monthly city financial report, is for the first four months of your current fiscal year. The first slide that we have gives us an idea of the consistency of our general fund revenue, which is our regular recurring revenue that we use for operations. I think this is a really healthy mix, but as we've, we've noted, as we move through the fiscal year, the consistency of this will change. We do receive real estate taxes at the beginning of our fiscal year, which helps us fund our operations throughout the year. So, that's why it's a little bigger piece of the pie at the beginning of the year, and then it equals out a little more as we move forward. This is the most exciting slide that I have. This is our general fund revenue. It shows fiscal year-to-date, four months this year as compared to last year. Amazingly enough, a lot of our major revenues, we're not losing ground when we compare it to last year very much, given what this area has been through since September. I think that's phenomenal. And with all the other things that are happening with the economy nationwide, and some unfortunately in our state, these are very good indicators for us. Now, there is another slide that's not quite so positive, we'll get to, but this puts us in, in good shape so far. Now, we, we can't say that this will continue. We do know with our real estate, there will be some impacts from the damage that was done by the hurricane, yet to be determined. Those will be reflected as we move forward in our fiscal year. This is our least, my least favorite slide, general fund expenditures, fiscal year-to-date, four months again, this year as compared to last year. Almost every category, not unanticipated, have been negatively impacted by inflation. We knew this, we, we, hopefully, we budgeted accordingly, and whatever we need to do to deal with this, it's a reality nationwide, not just in our area, we will handle as we move forward. The one anomaly on this slide, I wanted to point out, you may recall me talking about this quite a bit last year, because it also created an anomaly. Under physical environment, that's the gray piece. Last year, we were significantly more, had expended significantly more at this time than we had the current year, and that's because we purchased stormwater pumps. So, again, that was a, a not a recurring item, but it is, was funded from our general operating fund. Restricted revenue, this is a complex slide. Our restricted revenues, some of these changes, we were able to anticipate, and some of them have moved a little more significantly, probably as a result of the storm and the other related things that are happening, hurricanes specifically in our area, and their impacts on new construction. The first item, building permit fees. While this is, we're significantly less than we were at this time last year, we have accounted for that somewhat in the budget, but then also, the state had allowed us historically to accumulate some funds in that, in that particular fund. That fund, building fees, they pay for themselves, and they're, and their own little fund. So, what happens is that excess is going to help us when we hit this dip that we're in right now. We're going to watch that, but again, it's not unnecessarily an indicator that there's financial concern with the health of the building permit fund. It's just something we're going to watch. Stormwater management fees, those are collected with our real estate taxes, so that's why they're lower. We will have to move through the whole process with the impacts of Hurricane Ian on all of our collections as anything that's related to real estate taxes. It's just uncharted waters for us, so we'll be watching that. Both the park and the road impact fees, obviously, we think this is an indicator of new construction slowing down more significantly than we thought. The, the positive financial fact about this is, we collect our impact fees first, we put them in the bank, we accumulate them for capital projects. They're for our capital projects only, they can't be used for operating. So, while this will impact our capital improvement program a few years down the road probably, we can modify that, and we do each year. Each year, we roll forward these amounts and see what we have available for our capital projects funding, and reprioritize and reallocate, and we'll make changes going forward. Surprisingly here, the state shared revenue and the local option gas tax, local option gas tax, year-to-date is, fiscal year-to-date is, is more than before. Again, consumer consumption changes, and we do, do use the state estimates. The states just do it. The state of Florida does a great job in giving us economic data and projecting some of our collections, revenue collections that are statewide. So, we relied on their numbers, so we're pleasantly surprised about those, and we'll be watching them as we go forward. We roll forward our cash balances. We try to give you three fiscal years here. Now, there's an asterisk there, and there's a big note, we haven't yet adjusted and calculated our unassigned fund balance. We do that every year. Once we finish our audit, get all of our audit adjustments done, we then can know what we have to roll forward for unassigned fund balance. So, that's just a note to let you know, we're still in the process of that. We think, I think I say there, the March report, so a couple months down the road, we'll, we'll firm up that number and present it to you. It almost always goes up, and we don't have any, any indication that it won't. It's just a matter of quantifying that number and presenting it to y'all. And then, we take that and roll it into our next year's budget. So, we're firm with respect of what we have. These cash balances, they're rolling forward so we can do for our capital projects, pay as you go, if you will. We accumulate money, so then we have funding for our capital improvement projects. That's what all these line items mean, all these bars, excuse me. So, pretty healthy trends. And, we did want to go give you a couple updates, very exciting. I know y'all have been hearing about FEMA with the assistance of the state implemented an expedited funding process. So, what we were able to do for our debris-related functions that were related to the hurricane, we were able to apply for a 50% advance. As we had talked about before, historically, with our last storm, 16 to 18 months to get reimbursed. That was a long time when you're talking about, you know, significant expenditures that are in the millions of dollars. So, they were able to give us an advanced funding. That's going to really help our cash flows. What we're doing with that is, we have that, that will be replenishing our general fund, because the general fund was, of course, our operating and disaster reserves. We're funding those expenditures that we've been paying out so far. So, this provides us some buffer with that. Our second bullet here is that we are in the process, as directed by council, to apply for the FEMA's Community Disaster Loan, and that's in conjunction with the state. That has much more, if we can qualify for it, much more advantageous long terms than a strip, one we would get off the street with the follow, with the next line item we're talking about. We are still analyzing the line of credit to see what we need and what we can get better terms on. As we've talked about before, because of the state's involvement with the FEMA loan, if we were to qualify for that, the interest rates are better, the, the fees to get into it will be obviously significantly lower. And then, there may be an opportunity for loan forgiveness down the road if our revenues were to remain depressed based upon a result from the storm. So, we are, that's a lot of data. Please be patient with us, because it's a lot of data to provide to FEMA and the state in order to qualify for that. So, we're going to continue to move through those processes, and we just ask that y'all be patient. We want to make sure y'all were aware of what we were doing, and y'all can provide any feedback, or please feel free to give us any questions you have about that. The very next meeting, we are going to be asking for the annual, an annual increase in the salary ranges. As we had prepared last year, in our charter, there is a provision for, to utilize a consumer price index for salaries. So, we're going to use that, and we're going to present it to you. We want to do it every year so that the salary ranges can move along, along with our staff, so that we have long, we, we are so fortunate, we have people who've been here so long, some since the inception of the city. We don't want them to, to grow, you know, beyond their range. It's just a natural movement, it's what all experts and personnel recommend that we do. So, that is it for you all, and you have any questions? Thank you for your attention. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My next item is, I am pleased to say that we have had the opportunity to hire our next clerk for the city, and they have accepted the position upon the consent of the council. We do know that today's Deb's official last day, so there may be a need, if, if it does arise, for me to appoint an interim. At that point, I'd like to ask your permission to appoint Brenda Reitz in the event that we need something certified. I believe we're looking for a start date right before the end of the month, so that we can hopefully get them on, onboard as quickly as possible. And Michael is very excited to be starting with us as well.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Have a vote on that, please.
Okay. Councilmember Corey?
Aye.
Councilmember Folic?
Aye.
Councilmember Forbes?
Aye.
Councilmember Bogas?
Aye.
Councilmember Purdon? Oops, sorry. Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmer?
Aye. Very good.
Thank you.
Oh, by the way, is that, who is that guy? What's his last name?
Michael Sheffield.
Isn't he, there used to be a sheriff in town named Sheffield years ago.
There is, and he, he's not aware that there's a direct relation, but as, there's many Sheins in the world, my maiden name, I'm sure there's a Shein somewhere I'm related to that I don't know. And a hunter.
All right, very good.
My next item is, we received a request from Lee County staff that we would assist in a, a letter for their, requesting for their appropriation of $2 million for the Larry Keiker Water Preserve Water Management Project. This is a significant project for the city and would be very helpful. It, it's been identified in the South Lee Water Management Plan, it's been identified by our consultants as well, so we would like to provide that endorsement.
Motion to approve. Second. Any other comment? Roll call, uh, vote, please.
Councilmember Folic?
Aye.
Councilmember Forbes?
Aye.
Councilmember Bogas?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Corey?
Aye.
Okay, running out of stuff here.
We're continuing as the announcement, you just had a little bit of my thunder that, as we did receive our 50% request. As far as I understand, the Lee County also received their request, and the city, I'm not aware of any other jurisdictions at this time that got the 50% request, so we're very grateful for that. It's identifying the cash flow, we've completely wrapped up the debris removal. We're continuing to follow up on additional grant opportunities, we participate in the LMS program. We understand that there was a press conference today that happened around 10:15 or so, that should give us an idea of the direct allocation to Lee County regarding CDBG DR grants. Now, in the past, the city has received those type of fundings, we used it for the home buyout program and the amount of, at West Terry as well. So, we're going to be looking forward to that process and how that develops. We understand there'll be restrictions. Additionally, some of those funds have to be used within low to moderate income census tracts, which we have identified and, and mapped as well. So, in the future, we'll probably need to walk through a process with you of how that will work once we get more information.
That early, that early reimbursement, that was your idea, right? You were responsible for that?
I, I, no, 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 smarter minds than me, but I was made aware of it by smarter minds than me, suggested a recommendation to you all to apply, yes.
Anyways, good deal. Thank you.
And last but not least, I just did want to say that our April 5th meeting is scheduled in the evening, but it is the first evening of Passover, and Passover begins at sundown. If you'd work with us, we would be looking, if it meets, I, I do need some more feedback from community development, as long as we haven't predisposed anybody's applications for zoning, we may look to make that a morning meeting. I also need to consult with Derek, because there's a requirement in the monthly that you have an evening meeting, so we might have to switch the second meeting, but we will be working with you and notifying you ahead of time and posting. But, if we can be cognizant of that holiday, we just wanted to do that as well.
Okay.
And that's the end of my reports.
Hurricane recovery?
Yep, I covered that a little, yep.
Okay. Mayor and council reports, Fred, or Chris, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Fred, if you wanted to go ahead? Oh. Yeah, on Tuesday, the 21st, that's next week, roughly at 1:30, but that time could change to 2:00. We will be honoring two different groups of volunteers, which we've talked about before. Byron Donalds is actually also, his office is honoring the same people. He'll be probably the main commenter, but any, any of the members of council or city staff that would like to come are welcome to come. I'm sure that I can find a use for most any of you to, if nothing else, help call the list of names of people. There's 122 names that get called, so that, I know my voice is, I don't want to call 122, so we can divvy it up with whoever shows up. And you can be in the receiving line, shaking hands, congratulating them. So, that, and there will be a reception thrown after that's over with for those that want to stay with light orders and so on.
Very good, I'm glad these people are... Pardon me?
Location.
Under Us Ridge, the clubhouse, main dining room.
Oh, okay. No, Mayor and Council, uh, the conclusion reports, I did, I did have one important one that I did need to address, is we've been made aware of an opportunity for some federal funding for land acquisition for stormwater purposes. It cannot be used because it's considered double dipping in the Quinn, Quinn Down Imperial Neighborhood. So, we would like, with your authorization at staff level, to send out some inquiry letters to potential proprietors that might qualify, meaning that we might be interested in their property. We didn't want any letters with city letterhead going out that the council wasn't aware. We're not making official or, uh, offers on any property, we're just sending out an inquiry letter, should they, should they're be interested in having further discussions with us if the property is for sale. We would still then need to acquire the grant and go through approval process at this level, but we didn't, we want to make you aware that that's an opportunity and have your nod that we can send those letters out. I don't need an official vote, I just want an understanding, you know the letter. I don't need an official vote, I just want an understanding, you know the letters will go out.
Very, very good, yes.
Is it going in order?
Going in order.
Just, I haven't had my first meeting with the Veterans Council, but we had two resignations recently, so just to the public, if you know a veteran that has certain skill sets, likes to work together well with others, we would welcome their applications. And I just want to compliment John Dolmer and his staff at Community Development for the job they've been doing, but I had two developer builders come to me with complaints about our permitting department and only to find out that they were just really frustrated like everybody else because they want things in 30 seconds. Only to have both of them tell me that the best permitting department they work with in both counties is ours in Benita Springs, so great job, John.
An improvement. Yes, Jamie, you have any report?
I do. On Monday night was the Fire Department Board meeting. Once again, there was a Phoenix Award given to a crew of firefighters. They also did anniversary pens. We had one firefighter receive a five-year and five firefighters receive a 20-year pen. Yes, so that was, that was great. And this Monday, the chief, the commissioner and two other fire personnel is going to Wisconsin for a final inspection of a fire engine to replace Engine 26, which is, it's a 2009, and they like to replace the trucks every 10 to 12 years. So they're going up to have a final inspection on that. And just to report on Station 7, that was located there on Hickory Boulevard. The Rough Electric was finished this past Monday. The rough framing is completed. And they have started the new lift for the boat that they keep there. And the boat won't be, they won't bring the boat to that lift until the station is completed, but the lift is started to get.
Making progress, making progress.
Making progress, yes, they are.
Tim, how many years he got now?
29 years.
29. I had known him since he was this old. Anyways, my report, I don't have any, yes. I missed you, you were going to be the first, now you're lost, all right.
All right, I had two things. First, the Technology Committee, in addition to its review of the cell tower service, has also been spending a lot of time reviewing EV charging stations, how many are in our area, what the trend is in the industry, and so forth. One of the interesting things is that Florida is second only to California in the number of registered EVs. And it is third behind New York in the number of EV chargers. In fact, we're ranked about 22nd in the nation as a, as a state as a whole. About 10% of all new registered cars in Florida last year were electronic vehicles. We need to think about what we can do to satisfy the need for electric chargers in Benita Springs. So I anticipate that the Technology Committee will be bringing forth some recommendations at a future council meeting. But one of the things that we might consider is making provisions for electronic charging in downtown as we attract more and more visitors, more and more residents to all the downtown activities. I'm not saying that the city would operate electronic charging stations, but we would perhaps think about making spaces available within city-controlled parking areas, certain areas such as where the bioreactor is, maybe in the lemon tree lot, wherever, maybe across the tracks in Depot Park, that would encourage the cellphone, I mean, electronic vehicle charge companies to locate there at their expense, do it through some sort of a lease. That's just an idea, I'm not submitting that as a proposal. I just want you to be aware that the Technology Committee will be coming forth with something with respect to that. The second thing I wanted to cover is that you all, I guess, received the same email I did last night that HUD is, had a press conference out at Fort Myers Beach, starting, I think, at 10:15 this morning. And it's been reported by the news press about 6:00 AM this morning, what that was all about. It's about $1.2 billion of money being earmarked for Lee County for housing assistance, housing projects, whatever. We have talked in the past about the Resiliency Task Force, and it's my understanding that the way that the county is going to approach the allocation is through that task force, which is meeting later this month, whatever, I think it's Friday, March 30th, or whatever that last Friday is. And so I'll be attending that meeting and reporting back to you. But what I would like is Arlene to also figure out who on staff would be best to accompany me that, to that meeting so that, you know, we have two ears that are listening to what's going on. And just to make sure that we have the right opportunity to put our foot forward with respect to the amount of that $1.2 billion that would be available to Benita Springs. If you just do it on a straight population of Benita Springs versus Russell Lee County, it's about 7%. So you figure 7% of $1.2 billion is 84 million, so, you know, it's not pocket change in terms of what's being made available. I'm sure there's other considerations than just, just population. It's also got to be a lot of needs, but we have a lot of needs in Benita Springs, so I'll be reporting back to you on that. And hopefully, you know, somebody like Lisa or Ellie can come with me to the meeting and, you know, we'll have two sets of ears to see what's going on.
Very good, very good. Anything else?
I have one thing. Can the tech, Chris, would the Technology Board also considered, consider where we're going to put these batteries when they're dead and how we're going to get rid of these batteries?
Well, I don't.
I'm just saying, put it on the list.
Well, I'm not sure that's part of the Technology Board's charter that's.
You're charging them, you're encouraging them, where are we going to do with them when they die? Where are we going to put them?
Okay.
Okay, I got your message.
Okay.
All right.
Just saying.
Anything else?
You're always so negative.
Okay, I guess we're ready to adjourn? Public comment.
Public comment.
Oh yeah, public comment, huh? You waited here all day, I'm sorry.
Mayor and Council, just as a reminder, three hours. We have a workshop right after this for.
Yeah, I'm ready to get into that, yeah, immediately.
Okay, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, I'm Jennifer Kirchner, representing Forest Creek Villas Condominium Association. And I want to start by thanking you for all your hard work keeping our community beautiful. I'm here to advocate for the clearing out of Lightner Creek. You, I gave you all a packet with some photos. Clearing out of Lightner Creek from 10827 to 10995 Lightner Creek Drive. Ian dropped lots of trees and left debris in that creek. The water's pooling and stagnant in many areas. The water's going to be a problem for the Bark and Play Dog Park also. We have some of the largest cypress and oak trees in Benita. They're beautiful. We take good care to keep them trimmed and healthy, but Ian devastated Lightner Creek and took down many trees. We had a company come in and use their crane to stand up some of the trees that came over on the Forest Creek side of Lightner Creek, but the job is very extensive. We need your help to get the creek cleared. After reaching out to South Florida Water Management District, Terry Park Administrative Office, Lee County Natural Resources Project Manager, and many more people since December, we now understand that there is an agreement between South Florida Water Management District and Lee County to clean certain water courses and that Lightner Creek falls into this category. If the city of Benita Springs requests this assistance to clean Lightner Creek by contacting Jennifer Hubbard, she can get the South Florida Water Management District scheduled to clean out Lightner Creek. I thank you for considering this request to keep our community safe and beautiful.
Can we give that information to Arlene, please?
I think it's on there.
You got the name? I mean, is he a contact?
Is it, Jennifer Hubbard?
We know Jennifer, we'll.
Yeah, I think, okay.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Hello, Kyle Moran, again for the record. We've already been talking about this for 18 months, so I'll keep it very short. Please designate downtown pedestrian friendly. Thanks, Kyle.
All right. Yes, sir. I know you.
I'm John Paul Doian from the Technology Advisory Board. I've spoken to council and the mayor about a year ago and just want to bring everyone up to date on what's occurred. We want to make Benita Springs more electric vehicle friendly. And in the past 12 months, we have succeeded in lobbying two major EV charging companies to invest in Benita Springs. The first one is Electrify America. They're the largest in the country. They have committed to put in six EV chargers at Bank of America next to Home Depot. This will be completely at their expense, funded by the Volkswagen settlement. That, they're at about a 90% design level now, and within two months, they will be submitting for a permit to install those six chargers at Electrify America. The second big one is Tesla, and Tesla has committed to put in 16 chargers in our city. We don't have a location yet. We're working on that location, but we should see that later this year. In addition to those high-speed chargers, I also endorse Counselor Corey's suggestion to put in chargers. These would be lower speed chargers in the neighborhood of maybe 40 miles an hour of charging in, in the downtown area such as the Lemon Tree area or even Riverside Park. And what's attractive about Riverside Park is the electricity is already there. So it would be very nice to be able to put those in there. It'll bring more tourists to that area. I think it'd be helpful to us. Of course, all of this is funded by vendors. None of it's funded by the city. Any questions?
Very good.
Okay, thank you.
Any more public comment? You guys are really showing up today.
I'm retired. I don't have anything else to do. Again, my, my name is Tim Deaton. I'm on the Technology Advisory Board. And I had the opportunity this Monday to meet with a gentleman named Bill Sanders. Now, you're not going to see Bill on the news and he's not famous, but he is worldwide the go-to man for Subaru if there's any problem identified, such as an airbag issue, electrical issue in the vehicle. He's also their chief, excuse me, expert witness if they're called into a legal situation. He knows the product. He knows the company. He has decades of service to them. Now, Subaru is introducing, and I'm not endorsing it by any means, a full-electric vehicle, but their idea is very cautious. And it's very cautious because of charging stations, because of the disposal, which is of the waste, which he says has not been, he says it has not been thoroughly researched. Excuse me. And they have been teaming with Toyota for years. And the Subaru vehicle is manufactured by Toyota in Japan for now. It is called the Sotera and it ships with an adapter that plugs into your 120 volt in your home. It takes one hour about to get one to two miles of travel, so it's relatively slow. They are quite aware of the quality home, a good quality home charger that runs off your 220. Right now, starts at about $2,500. They expect that to drop precipitously over the next year or so. Subaru is not going to be installing fast chargers. The only manufacturer that we're aware of that installs fast chargers is Tesla. They rather would leave it to those independent businesses that understand the sighting and the, and the installation. Now Subaru's marketing has told them that installing a situation like we have at Miramar and like coming these other two places does not make Benita Springs a destination. Makes it more convenient for those people who are here. It does not attract people with EVs just to come to that area because it's there. They come to areas like Benita Springs because they like it. They're no different, he says, than anybody else, except they may have higher incomes because the cars are much more expensive. They're willing to search for an EV charging station when it gets here. So these three that we're going to have, people are going to find. So I recommend that we take a lesson from Subaru. We leave the EV charging station and their citing to the experts that are willing to invest their time and their revenues in it, and if things go sour, they soak up the loss. What we can be do, what we can do, rather than try and get into the EV charging business at little or no cost, is to make sure that those people are welcome. And I suggest that it be done by removing any obstacles that gets in their way. Don't get in their way with restrictive zoning. Make it easy for them to obtain permits for construction, operation and maintenance, and that's not just them. That's the other people and contractors that are going to be working with them. And as we should with any business, now this may not sound like it's a big deal to you, but I think it's a big deal to the public. When there is a groundbreaking, when there is a grand opening, when there's something of that nature, someone from the city attends because they're going to be able to get positive press that the business may not get. It costs the city little or nothing to do it. So I think we should save our money, let the pros do the business, and let them go unhindered. Thank you for your time.
Very good, thank you. Do we have anything else before public comment? Okay, now we're going to adjourn and immediately start the workshop. Order, is workshop to order?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. If Nicole Corina will come forward, we have our workshop on the capital improvements projects for parks.
Do we want to let the crowd settle first?
Electric.
It's electric.
One hour to charge one mile, is that what he said?
One to two.
Four miles.
Wow.
One hour for four miles.
Four miles? I wonder how long it holds a charge? It was degradation.
How long they hold the charge?
Like if you didn't use it, how long it would hold a charge?
Lose 50% in a week.
All right, good afternoon now. Today I will be talking about the parks projects that are in the current capital improvement plan. Just a little caveat, this, this does not include any of the Hurricane Ian projects that are within the parks. This just includes current CIP projects that are in the budget. So, the first one is a big update on the Community Park Baseball Complex. You have approved several phases of this project, so I do have several slides on this one to give you updates on where we're at. So this is the original master plan that lays out. It doesn't lay out specific phases because we've been going through those as we need them, but it does give an overall plan of an update to Community Park as well as, but specifically highlighting the baseball complex. So for Phase 1, the goals and accomplishment, the big one was stormwater management. We had to make sure the hardscapes had the runoff that they were supposed to have. The trench drain system was put in. The, a large portion was ADA accessibility, and I do have. The, a large portion was ADA accessibility, and I do have some pictures later on to show you the differences. So if you just bear with me, but we were removing the existing non-compliant concrete and asphalt and replacing it with ADA compliant papers and concrete, as well as improving the pedestrian connectivity. To the ball fields at that, in that phase, we did have to relocate some backstops to make more room for ADA compliance. We installed new safety netting, installed concrete curbing, as well as making those aesthetic improvements of the paver pathways and nodes. The, we made a color scheme for the overall project, as well as including some additional landscaping. So here are some of the photos. If you look on the left, that was before. If you look on the right, that is after. So this is before, before Phase One and after Phase One. So there is a large improvement in the aesthetic, as well as the connectivity. Here's some additional photos. On the left, you'll see the before. In this photo, it doesn't actually depict on how big of a slope that was. That's actually how the drainage was down the center. So those were some pretty steep uphill climbs for that walkway. We're now on the right-hand side. It is completely flat, and the trench drains are along the edges of the ball fields. So for Phase One, in doing that, we ended up with some constraints on the fields themselves. So we had to do some adjustments for Phase Two to create the playability of the fields. They were not at Little League standards any longer because we had to move a lot of the fencing to put in these ADA and storm water improvements. So these were some of the ideas and scope of work that was in Phase Two. And so you can see, these are just renderings, but I will get to actual pictures of what it looks like. But we did add new fencing, new scorekeeper areas. We had to change out the layouts of the fields, get to the scope here. We had, we also added new dugouts and the addition of complete overhaul of the facility itself. So in Phase Two, what we did accomplish was redoing all of those fields of one, two, and four. The reason three was left out was that was actually done by grant funding through the Minnesota Twins the year before. So we didn't have to do the actual field layout of Field Number Three, but we did change out the dugouts, the fencing, all of those things. So we did upgrade our current irrigation system, as well as relocation of bases, baselines, pitcher's mounds, the entire field. All fields received upgraded scoreboards, as well as foul ball markers. The aesthetically pleasing aspects were new fencing, including new backstops and safety netting, because the new, the old safety netting didn't, wasn't compatible with the new fencing, as well as eight new dugouts and four new scorekeeper areas. So here are the differences between the end of Phase One to Phase Two. So now you see a bigger difference, which also includes landscaping that's more mature now, as well as in the background, you see the rubber-covered black fencing, as well as the dugouts. I have closer-up pictures too, so we'll. So here's the before and after of the dugout area. So we do now have custom dugout structures that are much more usable and workable for our Little League and provides shade, as well as better egress and ingress onto the fields. Here's some other photos. The one on the left, that's Field Three. And the one on the right is Field One. So you see those, the addition of those new scorekeeper shade structures, as well as the new fencing and backstops. Here are the new field elements. So, and these are not retouched, I promise you. I did not put a filter on these. This is what the fields look like now. So these were actually taken on Monday, so that way I had the most up-to-date. So these are what the fields look like now. So they are in excellent, excellent condition, excellent shape. So this project was just, sorry, let me go back. So this project was just completed this month, well, actually, the end of last month. So Little League is now playing on our, on our fields, the newly completed fields, and they are very happy and very excited.
Great.
So.
How many people are in the Little League?
There are approximately four hundred kids in our Little League program. So it is a rather large, large program, including some people we know.
Very good.
So now, what we did, and it's been a couple of meetings back now, that you did approve, what we've now had happen, of course, once you get things going and things get better, you find other issues. So our next phase, Phase Three renovations, is what we have signed a contract for now, is new LED lighting. So this will replace the current metal halide lighting that we have, which is very expensive for us to run. So this new LED lighting, it is on order, like everything else. It is back-ordered four months, but that actually works out in our favor. Little League is playing their regular season, so we finished Phase Two in time for Little League, and we did plan all of these phases in conjunction with Little League so that they still could play. So they are playing their regular season. It ends in May. So we'll start up right in June with the demolition of the current lighting and the installation of the new so that Little League has time for their next season. So that, again, includes, one big factor that we're excited about is, of course, it being LED, and that will save us tremendously on our electric. But it does help with, the poles will be smaller in size, as well as a little bit different than the ones we have now. So they should help us in the next hurricane. Hopefully, we don't have any, but if we do, they should help us. Because unfortunately, during Ian, we did have destruction of one light completely and several issues with others. So we did have to work with Little League on playability and how we play certain games on certain fields for this season, because not all lighting is functioning. And it wasn't as simple as you just pop a new fixture on. That wasn't a possibility, because we looked at that. So that's where we're at on our baseball phases and what we're going to next. Other renovations that we are looking to do per the master plan are renovations to the concession building, a large, now that we've made all of these fantastic renovations to the facilities itself. Now, we're looking at some of the changes to the building. The restroom facilities are in great need of upgrade. They have not been upgraded in a very long time, so that is one big one that we need to get done. And we are working with Little League on what their priorities are. That's a big priority for them as well, because of, you know, we do have so many people using these facilities, and we want them to be nice, like the rest of our facilities. Also, covered spectator areas. Right now, we don't have any, because we did have to remove the old ones for ADA compliance. So that would be another one that we do have. And we do have funding currently in the CIP in out-years to do, to do these projects. So here's a list of other things, the addition of T-ball fields, enhanced landscaping around the entire facility instead of just the entry node, as well as connectivity to Pine Avenue, because currently, it's just connectivity to the parking lots. But we are looking at connectivity to Pine Avenue itself. And of course, we'd be working in conjunction with Matt's team and what they're doing on Pine to make that connection. So that's for the baseball facility, so I'm going to move on to the skate park, unless you have any specific questions on baseball?
The light poles that we put into gold, those are the ones that we approved, and we actually saved money on those, right?
Yes, those are the ones you just approved. Yes. Yep, absolutely. You're welcome. So now, we're going to move on to the skate park. The photo on the left there, that was our original wooden skate park that we had. It was built, I believe, in two thousand and four. And it slowly kind of disintegrated, because a wooden skate park in Florida is not the best idea. But it ultimately was taken out completely by Hurricane Irma. So it did set as just a vacant concrete spot until we did hire Stan Tech Consulting. They have an action sports division out of Texas. So we did have a lead, our lead here, Kevin Mangan in Naples, who did reach out and helped us with their action sports division. This was actually a really fun project, because what they did is, their action sports division is made up of professional skateboarders who now build skate parks for a living with engineers. So when we did have two public workshops, they laid out a preliminary design, and then it was literally just putting kind of like tissue paper on top and then had all of the kids draw in elements they would like to see. And so they incorporated all of those elements that the community wanted into the design of the skate park. So it was really a hands-on design of everyone, and not just myself, who's not a skateboarder, you know, working with a consultant. This one was really a public project. So we did, the final design was presented to council in two thousand and twenty, and then in October of two thousand and twenty-one, with Ellie's help, we did receive, it was Ellie, not her help, it was Ellie, got us some grant funding through the federal DEP program. So we did, we were awarded a little less than two hundred and eighty thousand dollars for that project. It was a matching grant. And then in April of two thousand and twenty-two, New Line Skate Park was awarded the construction of this project. Construction did began in August of two thousand and twenty-two. The hurricane did put us a little bit behind, but not greatly. But what we have found, I'll show you some. Here was the public workshop. As I showed you, this, these are photos of the kids drawing in the elements that they would like to see in the, in the project. And then here was the final design that was approved by all of you, with the input from the public and from the kids. Here is what the photos of the new skate park looks like. So we went from a wooden skate park to a twenty thousand square foot concrete skate park. It is the largest concrete skate park that New Line has put in Florida. So they are very happy about that. They do build them all over the United States, as well as in Canada. But they were very excited to do this project, because it is their biggest in Florida.
All right.
So here are some of the elements that we have. We did put different color aspects into it, and that is colored concrete. It's not paint, so it should, should last. And the photo on the left, that is what's called the pump track. So there are different aspects and elements of the skate park. It's not just your normal bowls, which are on this slide. But it's a, the photo on the left is also a street, it's called a street plaza, which has the elements, the stairs, the rails, the things, as well as the other photo that gives you the pump track, which is better for beginners and tricks, doing different tricks. So I've learned a lot in the world of skateboarding. So here are some additional photos. The one on the right is a different angle of the pump track, and the one on the left is some additional features of the street skate. But what we have, have learned is, the skate park itself, we are not complete. We are needing, we found a little bit of a limitation in the existing exterior wall. Because, let me go back to the beginning here. Oh, you don't really see it in here, but the original skate park had a perimeter wall, a concrete perimeter wall, as well as fencing. And in doing the new skate park, you see the wall in the background. What, what we have come across is, we have some low points in this dip that are not safe. So the issue is, what could happen is, there's about, it's about eleven inches wide ledge, and then that drops off, though, approximately fifteen feet. So someone could easily, if I'm standing next to it, I mean, I'm not tall. So it comes up to about here, so they could easily climb onto that or jump onto that. So we are getting pricing now from our construction management at risk contractors to fix this issue. And this does need to be addressed before we can open the skate park. We are not at, you know, final completion with the skate park yet. We are very close. But this is an aspect that we are going to have to, it's just going to be required for us to fix before we can open it to the general public.
Do we need additional concrete, or can we use just fencing?
We can't use fencing. We looked at a bunch of different options. Fencing was at the top of most of our lists. But as you know, as skateboarders, it's our flying past, their clothes, their hands, something can get caught in that fence.
That's what we were told. We don't want kids losing fingers.
Yeah, we don't want anyone losing any fingers. So what we do, we do have to build it up with concrete. So it would just be doing these two low points. Those are the two that have been identified. It's not the entire wall. But the two low points, and then the wall would be, of course, repainted, which was going to happen anyway. But we do have to get permitting, as well as contractor estimates. That is not included in the current cost of the skate park, as we would have to get another contractor to do this work. So we are working on those numbers now. We have reached out and are getting estimates on how much that will cost. And then that will come back to you as an item, once we have that information. But it is a beautiful skate park, so I'm very proud, very proud of that project. If anyone has any questions about the skate park before I move on to the pool? Okay, so now we're moving on to the children's activity pool. So this project is the zero-entry kiddie pool. So it's basically a playground set in about two feet of water. So it's called a children's activity pool. It will be in addition to our current city pool, which is the photo on the left. So we would still have that pool intact for adults, but our current pool is not kid-friendly. It doesn't have a zero-entry. It doesn't have your normal stair downs. It is a lap pool. That's what it was built for. We do have kids, of course, in the summer that use it, but if they don't know how to swim properly, they have to wear life jackets. So we do have to have, the, the, most shallow depth is three feet, so we don't really have like a small kiddie pool area. So this project will include a family restroom facility, which is also required as an upgrade, because we don't have that currently. So that is part of the construction of this project. So we will, here, I know this is difficult. I mean, you guys may be able to see it a little bit better. This is the layout of the rendering of the plan. So you will see on the right-hand side is the children's activity pool. The left is the current pool. And you will see, we have a new entrance, which will be in the center here, instead of coming through the pool. And then we'll have fencing that goes in between both the adult's lap pool and the children's activity pool, so that kids aren't running in between the both, as well as new shade structures that will come between the two. So it will encompass both. As well as new shade structures that will come between the two, so it will encompass both sides as well as seating and the restroom area will be up here with new pumps and things like that. We will also be redoing the parking lot to make it completely compliant for both sides of the pool. As well as upgrades for ADA compliance as well. So here are some of the features. This is what the play structure will look like. So it will be a zero entry pool, so you just walk in and it gradually gets deeper with the deepest parts due to the slides and things like that being between eighteen and twenty-four inches. So it will be shallow, but all of these features, spray water and dump buckets of water and it's more of just a giant fun playground in water. So here's additional features. It does have bubblers, like a splash pad in the shallow end. As well as, these are not real palm trees. They spray water on you as well. And then here's just another view of the pool and features, just the additional features that it will have. This is, I know this is a little difficult to see too, but this is the addition of the new family restroom that we'll have for the children and the new pool office because the new entrance is going to come in this way. So this will be the pool office because we will, of course, have to have additional lifeguards that oversee both sides of the pool. And just where we're at on this project, let me go back here. We are at LDO. We have been under LDO review. We should have LDO approval very soon. We just received some comments back of minor things that just need change. So we do have a letter that, those are being fixed right now. So we should be out to bid for this project within the next month. And then we would be moving forward with this project. And then future considerations that we have talked about is renovation to the current restroom facilities because those are not going away because we still need them, but they are the existing. We did do some upgrades to them a while back, but that's been about twelve years or so. And it's the original pool house since it was built in the late eighties. It is in need of some renovation. Do you have any questions on the pool? Yes.
Nicole, is there any plans for the fencing that surrounds the pool to upgrade that?
Yes, this is, that is in this project as well to change out the perimeter fencing. We are still looking at making it be chain link, but have the landscape buffer around. Because we did speak with community development about the chain link, so it will not have the look it has now. It will have landscape buffering around the entire perimeter. Yes. Yep, so there is a landscape element to this project as well. Any other questions?
Around the kids, around the kids' pool too?
There, yes. Yep, there will be landscape around the entire perimeter so that it is buffered from the road and the public just walking. Next, we have the Lyles Hotel roof replacement. This has been awarded to CFF Roofing. It did take about seven months to get the materials for this project because of just shortages. We have run into a couple of things. This was actually slated to be replaced the day the hurricane hit. So they did have to demobilize right before the hurricane. We had all material on site ready to go. They had to take it all back to their warehouse. We did start, this project has been started. The addition over here to the left of the Lyles Hotel, that part is complete. We have run into some issues on this part, on the photo on the left, or on the right, rather. We do have some structural elements that we have found when ripping off the old roof. So we will have, we are working on pricing to, we had to get it re-engineered by our facility assessment team actually helped us with this. Re-engineer the trusses that are under the roofing had quite a bit of damage that we were not expecting. So we are waiting on a change order from a roofing company for that work to be done so that they can finish the rest of the roof. And once they do that, then we can actually move forward with the hurricane repairs to the facility as well.
The roof trusses, they're not the same wood on the wonderful stairs that survived?
No, unfortunately. I wish they were because that wood was, it held up to two feet of water, so if only they were. But luckily, it is not the entire roof that has this issue. It is just, I mean, it's unfortunately the larger portion of the building that has this issue, but it is an issue that we already have engineered plans, have put them out to our roofing contractor and they are getting pricing to us to make those changes.
Did the roof leak with the storm or just did water come up from the bottom?
Both. We did have additional, since the roof was in need of replacement and we already had some leaks, we, of course, we have some issues from the storm as well. We just don't know the difference in damage from the storm versus already having issues with the roof.
Nicole, are most of those leaks around the outer edge of the building?
Yes, yes.
That's the tails of the truss.
Yep, and it's in this back corner. So it's in, I don't know if you've ever been upstairs. It is in where the Historical Society had their offices and where Tony Backhurst's former office was. So this whole back portion is the issue area with the truss. Also, we have what you'll see in next year's budget, because we do kind of look at this from a budgetary point of view. We will be looking at, we did do a lot of work on the artist cottages during, for the storm. But we did not do any work in doing the reciting of those except for the rotten pieces. But we will be looking at in next year's budget, replacing additional siding that the wood isn't rotten, but it doesn't look aesthetically pleasing, as well as repainting all of them. So those are some things that will come forward in next year's budget for your consideration.
Nicole, one thing I want to point out, you have the new security cameras that will be coming along. In a future presentation on facilities, Laura's going to address that as well, is we're probably going to be looking to, like, as we plan for future security cameras in all of the parks. We probably need a general CIP for that. And then just like how Matt's CIP works, as each park comes online, we'll pull from that. But do want to make you aware, once we add those security cameras, there's maintenance costs for monitoring those Wi-Fi connections. There might be electrical upgrades, but then there would be a continuing cost on that. But the plan would be eventually that every facility had completely upgraded security cameras.
And that project, actually Laura and her team had started that project in the Lyles Plaza area before the storm. We were waiting on the roof project to be complete before we put the new ones on the Lyles, but luckily they weren't there to get destroyed. So that's the only plus we have on this. Does anyone have any questions about the Lyles? Next, we have our restroom trailer that we have at Marni Fields. We are working with Grady Minor on a design to put in water and sewer for this restroom trailer. They are working with community development on that as well as BSU. They do have some preliminary designs for that on what BSU will permit as well as community development. That water and sewer will only be for this restroom trailer. It won't be water and sewer throughout. So it will be somewhat like a camper hookup, basically, of water and sewer. So that way, we no longer have to pay the weekly pump-out services to a third-party company, which is very costly, about twenty-five hundred dollars a month. Yes, so this will help offset those costs. They are air-conditioned, yes.
But as you recall, Mayor Council, we are not permitted because of FPNL to put a permanent structure at that location, which would have been our first recommendation.
Yes.
Under the power lines.
Correct. I mean, we would love it to be a permanent location, but this was our
Pretty close.
Best thing we could do so far. We're still working on. Next, we have the Island Park Entry. This is the property we purchased off South Riverside Drive. This actually is, the design is pretty much complete. We were undergoing a community development review when, right around the time of the hurricane. So this one kind of has been put on hold a little bit while we are doing other hurricane-related items. But this is something that could come online rather quickly. We are looking at different hardscape elements as well as the bridges. So we are looking at making it, instead of, we were looking at it being a bridge that was designed not prefabricated. Whereas prefabricated is actually better for us in terms of permitting because it does go over a body of water and how it would lay out. Permitting through South Florida Water Management and those sort of things would be a little bit different if we did it prefabricated versus an actual built bridge. So we have looked at, as well as DEP, sorry about that. So DEP would have to permit it as well. It would be similar to, we are looking at a similar design to the Red Bridge that goes from Depot to Island, but much wider and bigger and with, it would be nicer design.
I like our Red Bridge.
I do too, but it doesn't fit our vehicles for access to Island Park. This one would have vehicular access for maintenance because we currently do not have that. So doing work on Island Park is a little difficult when you're only using small golf carts. Or contractors, you know, during the hurricane pulling large trees out of the river, it was very difficult. But here are some renderings that you have seen before that have come before you. And we will move forward with this. It is currently in the budget for five hundred and fifty thousand dollars for park impact fees. But it would be an extension of Island Park.
Nicole, is that a more accurate rendering now to what the size of the pocket park would be?
No, this is the Yes, this is a little on the larger side. The parcel is small. Does anyone have any questions on the Island Park project? Next is the Mayhood Soccer Complex that was in discussion at last year's budgetary time. This is something that is currently in planning. We have some different features. I know this is a little small, but it does currently, on this rendering, it does have two full-size field and one children's field. The full-size field, you can switch those into two children's. So it could be, so it's technically five children's fields with two adult fields. So it does include a new parking lot with a hundred and two spaces as well as ADA. And that parking would be in the back here of the dog park. So here's the dog park in green with the parking. And as you've all seen, if you've gone on Terry, the dog park is a huge hit. We don't have enough parking. So we're hoping these two will work in tandem by, you know, the soccer is usually used at night. So during the day, this parking lot could also be used as overflow parking for the dog park. So that would help us tremendously with the dog park. The element in the center here, the round circle, that would be a restroom facility, which many people have asked about currently. The property does have water, BSU water, but we do not have sewer connection. So this would be adding that sewer connection to have that restroom facility, which would work both for the dog park as well as the soccer facilities. As well as a maintenance storage, so that will help us on the maintenance side of this park because it is a large park that it would help us have a place to store maintenance materials. We could, on here, as presented before, this could be done in phases because the restroom facility is such a large element for the dog park and the soccer. That could be in phase one with the parking lot because that's going to be a dual-use as well as then going with phase two of putting in the soccer facilities, the soccer fields. And then phase three would be putting in LED soccer field lighting.
And that parking lot is accessible from Benita Drive?
Yes, we would make it accessible from Benita Drive. There is an entrance right now currently into the dog park from Benita Drive.
But you wouldn't be able to get to that parking lot from Terry Street then?
No. Nope, you would have to get into it from Benita Drive only. So that is kind of how we've done it now, is planning it in phases. We do have funding for, in the current budget for design. That's what we're looking at. We do not have the construction funds at this time. We haven't moved forward beyond a rendering at this point because it would be engaging and hiring a firm for actual design, construction documents, permitting. But we aren't at that spot yet. And the funding for the project, which, again, these numbers are based on before hurricane construction prices. So the funding we have for the total project in out-years in our CIP is three point seven million. So it is a large number. But that's not all in the current budget. Current budget is for design only. Does anyone have any questions on soccer? Next is the Oak Creek Kayak Launch. This is a launch that we took over from Mosaic. So this launch, and once we did take this over, it does have some issues with it not being ADA compliant. The launch is not compliant. The parking is not compliant as well as the walkway. We did receive quite a bit of damage during the hurricane to the walkway as well as minimal damage to this wooden, well, it's actually composite. We had some damage here. The ramp itself is fine, but it isn't, again, it's not ADA compliant. This photo on the right doesn't really accurately show how steep this is. But if you went down there, it is very steep. Just for me to walk down it, I had to hold on to the handrail so I didn't slide all the way down it.
Nicole, how do you make a ramp like that ADA compliant?
There are different things you can do. At Riverside Park, our kayak launch there is ADA compliant. So there are different things you can do. Instead of just making one big ramp, you make them twist and turn on the way down, so you don't make them straight in. So there are things you can do that we would need to do to have it redone.
Nicole, what kind of use does this ramp get versus the other ramps?
Well, this one, since we took it over because it was not ADA compliant and really out of ADA compliance, we have left it closed. So we didn't take any risk to that. When Mosaic had it, I don't know. They didn't really give us numbers on usage.
How many complaints have you had since we closed it?
Right in the beginning, I had a handful from the people that lived there in that Right in the beginning, I had a handful from the people that live there, in that community. But beyond that, beyond that, I haven't had any.
You know, you may, it may be a more cost-effective thing, just to take it out.
I think I want to defer that to Derek when he returns, because it was part of a zoning requirement in the original application, but we could look into that.
It's your only access to Oak Creek.
It is the only access to the creek there, yes.
It's the only access to Oak Creek?
Yeah.
Yes.
That is steep.
Yes. I mean, that was a huge highlight, was that it was the access to Oak Creek, so we were quite excited about it. I know the kayak vendors have called us about it a lot, because they would like to use it. But individual residents, not so many, so. But yeah, once Derek gets back, maybe that's something we can circle back with him. Next is the Riverside Park benchell renovations. So we did discuss, the restroom facilities are in need of upgrade. So they have not been upgraded since it was built, so that is something we would look to. And that includes the interior dressing room restrooms as well, not just the six outdoor on the back side of the benchell. We are looking to repaint the benchell, just give it a little facelift, as well as changing out the lawn. Because if you have been there, as we're getting towards the end of event season, the turf has taken a beating. So we are looking at switching this out to artificial turf, so that way for events, it's not gonna have that wear and tear once we get to the later events. Because currently, there are large spots that do not have grass on them, and it's just from the large amount of people that come to our city events, which is a great problem to have, but at the same time, natural turf lawns just cannot handle that kind of traffic. So we do have funding to switch this out to artificial turf.
As has been discussed, or can you educate us on, if you're putting in tents and tent stakes with artificial turf, what's the downside there?
There are different ways you have to do it. So we have been doing research on the types of artificial turf. It wouldn't be the rubber pieces that you normally put in, because those are so hot. So we are looking at cork. They have, they actually have so many different varieties now that you can put in. But what some places have done is, when they're installing it, you can actually map out places where you can put tents, and you can have little pop, things that pop open and have tents that can hook into them. So they're already installed when you install the turf. So that way, it's laid out. I mean, you can't really make changes, because you can't nail, you know, tent stakes into it. But it actually makes it easier, because then you could say, you know, here's your layout of where you can have all of your tents.
And currently, Collier County, we were able to do a tour there. There is their largest new park.
Paradise Coast.
Paradise Coast has major events there, and they have locations. They have tournaments there, and they have concerts, and they do allow tents, and they have appropriate locations. And that would have to be, fit into the special event permit process, so they understand mapping of where it's appropriate. But they've built that into the design of that park as well.
We have a great staff, or what?
Yeah, you sold my question, I was gonna ask about the, about the stakes going into the office. Very good.
Yep, the only caveat is, you know, they can't drive on it. So no, any sort of food vendors, things like that, that are in a truck, they would have to stay in the parking lot areas and not drive in the middle.
Which is not, actually, we don't encourage that currently. We know that there has been constraints, and there's been use of that in the past, but it usually breaks our sprinkler heads, so either way, it's not conducive to the use of the park.
We can do our maintenance, our maintenance truck can get around in there?
Oh yes, we can use our, because we don't use large, yeah, they can go on there. It's just not large food trucks that can go on top of that.
They'll be able to go around the outside like they are?
Yep, yep. Does anyone have any questions about the benchell renovations?
You said you're gonna paint that?
Yes.
Hasn't been painted in 20 years.
Give it a little facelift, a little brightening up.
Anything else, folks? Is that all we have to do today?
I have one more slide, and then I'm finished. The last one we have are Depot Park Playground renovations and expansion. So we do have funding in this to design. So it would be renovating the existing playground, which is highly used. It is a playground that is highly used. But it would be changing up some of the elements that we've found that are less used versus ones that are used more, as well as upgrading the exterior of the restroom building, because we did upgrade the interior a few years ago, as well as expanding this park, going further down towards the river. So making it much larger. Currently, there is a play structure for small kids, and then the rest of the park is just more like an open space park. So it would be making more play structures throughout the park, as well as going further down to the river to make it much larger.
Very good.
And safety when we hit the river, right?
Oh, we're not going all the way to the river, yeah. It's just more towards the river.
Nicole, after our meeting last night, I drove down to River Park.
Yes.
And four vehicles, and I just managed to catch a gentleman coming hopping the closed-off fencing. Unless you get to the park, that's only where you see the only park closed sign. And then we do, I mean, is there any litigation or issues for us as a city, if people are in there and get hurt?
I have spoken to Derek about this several times, because what we are having issues with in terms of parks that have been closed due to the hurricane, as long as we have our proper, our appropriate signage posted, which we do. We have had issues with people ripping those signs down and still using the facilities, but we, our staff has proper documentation of when they're placed. We have pictures of when their date stamped, time and date stamped of when they're placed, as well as pictures of when they're removed and taken down. We've had people use chainsaws and take down our wooden barricades. We've had, so we, our staff is doing everything that we can to keep these things closed. But Derek has assured us that, as long as we make sure that we continue to re-barcade and re-put closed signs, that we are covered.
Is there any way to close off the roadway, sorry, Mayor?
Yeah, this is Rick.
So you can't close the road?
I think we could talk to Derek about that.
I can't, I'm in a meeting, I'm in a meeting right now. Can you call me about half an hour? Thanks. Wait, I'm sorry.
So we can't close the road off?
We can try, I mean, we can circle back, we can circle back with Derek on that one. It is a lar, it's pretty wide. The problem that we run into is, there's nowhere for them to turn around. And it can't close it at the beginning due to the boat center.
I think what we have to look at is the easement requirements for that roadway, because it's, so we could, we'll take a look and see. The one thing I do wanna kind of stress with the recovery, because of the hurricane of our city parks, many of them were built with grant dollars, former grant dollars, and are in multi-year contracts. And there are requirements on bill-back. Some of them, for example, there might have been an Army Corps of Engineers permit for that. It's very extensive, so we have to be very careful on removing existing structures, because there will be a requirement for bill-back or a recovery of those funds, depending on where we are within that contract. So the recovery from the parks is a very different situation than the recovery from like debris removal or other construction projects, because we have to track down the original grant contract, make sure we're in compliance, and then additionally, kind of foresee what other permits might be required in that bill-back, so that we're in compliance with those, so that none of these are clawbacks of grants we received 10 to 15 years ago that were a part of those projects.
Thank you.
As well as going through FEMA?
Correct, also, a little bit additionally different than this is everything has to be completely documented and then approved for the restoration with the parks. There's also the Department of Interior that's involved with anything that could possibly be designated as historic, whether it's, which is not the city's list of historic preservation. That is the state's master file, based on any structure that's 50 years or older.
And any archaeological sites? So we are going through that process now.
Guys are great.
Thank you. That's all for me.
Great.
You said, city manager was ready to go home?
You do, you do have to permit public comment, so officially ask for public comment.
Hey Lisa, Lisa, come on up here.
Thank you.
All right, we're adjourned, I guess. Thank you.